Anna.
The author.
Yeah.
What do you mean?
I'm scared damn.
Alright, at this time, I'll call the meeting back to order, and I believe in our agenda, agenda that we are at Hurricane Helene building permit.
We still have one more item in Budget Committee for Budget Amendment number three.
Okay. Oh, okay, my apologies, yes.
I'll be super fast with it, Budget Committee discussed Budget Amendment number three, which included a grant from Appalachian Powers Foundation for Public Safety Departments. Commonwealth Attorney received a grant to support the Triad Program, and state funds, the CBG funds for Helene recovery, and a grant from ICE for the Sheriff's Office. Following discussion, the amount was three hundred ninety-seven thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars. Following the discussion, Mr. Widener made a motion to recommend the Board accept Budget Amendment number three, and Mr. Sturgill seconded the mo- the motion, and it was unanimously approved as a committee recommendation.
Okay, we have a committee recommendation, any, any discussion on, any further discussion? I think this one's pretty straightforward. Alright, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, now Hurricane Helene building permit fee waiver discussion.
So just a reminder, the Board extended the original building permit fee waiver six months to November first. We still have a few projects that are out there that are coming in, and with the new funds from the, the state, the CDBG funds, well, we expect to have two or three more still, so we'd like to ask that the, the Board consider extending the building permit fee waiver for Helene, sorry, Helene damage an additional six months to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
That'll help us hopefully get at least the projects that we have, that we know of, under, under permit.
Okay.
We get a motion on that one, don't we?
Yes, sir.
I move we approve that, I'll say that.
Okay, well, alright, we, a motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, okay, Carnegie School Building Ownership Acceptance.
So, Mountain Cap used to be located in the, the old Carnegie School out on, oh lord, is that Iron Street?
Iron Street.
And the, with them relocating, the school board has deemed it surplus property, so it's automatically goes back to the county for further repurposing. The, we do have a few ideas and some partnership, I, discussions with some different stakeholders.
Be careful.
Don't have anything in mind yet, but looking for, for options, but the first step would be to accept the, the ownership. Thank you, in the, in the packet you had a draft deed for, that's been reviewed by a county attorney, I'm pretty sure, yeah, and just needs your acceptance. You need to authorize the, the vote would be to authorize the Chairman to execute the acceptance on the county's behalf.
I guess we need a motion, don't we?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion, we have a second, do we have any, any further discussion?
Just one comment, be very ca- sorry, excuse me, be very careful when we get down to, you made the comment that some community organizations are interested, be very careful when we get down to that, we gotta make sure we.
Vandal property.
Yes.
Properly vandal.
Do our homework. We went through this once before and it created some ill feelings and we don't need that.
I agree.
Okay, Mr. Widener?
I, I just want to make it known as far as my, my thoughts on this is, moving forward, I think we could work with people, but I think we also need to look at, very strongly before any thoughts are as far as turning anything over, I think there's I think there's some great things that can come out of this that, that we can do in partnership with others, but as far as the ownership itself, just sort of planting the seed there, I, I think this is something we need to hold on to.
Okay, alright, any other comments? Alright, we have a motion, we have a second, alright, I'll accept the ownership of the Carnegie School Building. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have an update on the McMullen Convenience Station.
So, we have received unofficial but corroborated notice from the railroad, at the Railroad Avenue Bridge that's gonna be built to serve the Hall Edition, is indeed going to relocate, the name of the road just left me, Round Stone Division Road, over to our, where our current convenience station is, so we do need to move forward on the McMullen Convenience Station project. Just a reminder, back in September, the Board did a vote to authorize us if we had to, to relocate, so we're gonna pull the trigger on that and hopefully get that project started fairly quickly.
Uh, do we have a dead, a deadline when we have to have it moved by?
We do not yet, no, we just know that it's gonna have to happen, so we're gonna go ahead and pull the trigger.
Okay, Project Pulse update.
So, in the, in your packet, you had, there was a spreadsheet update, let me find it here on my. So, we'll just go through it quick, I wanted to update on some of the projects that we've, that we have completed to date. It's on already? So, I'll, I'll, let me take a step back, I was gonna do this during County Admin time, but we did a, a picture photo contest, and this is one of our, our finalists, so go online and, and vote for one of the top four if you, if you'll do. This is, I love this, this picture, I'm sorry, I just, I had to break that up.
Never was a beautiful.
Yep.
The red cells and lights and the blue.
Yep, so the, the first project, Kiawana Pump Station, that's, that is operational, everybody's happy, and we can check that one off the list and, and delete it from the spreadsheet, that, as far as I know, everybody actually had to change a few pressure reducing valves in the water heaters because they had too much pressure, so that was, that's deemed a success.
You want me to go from five to hundred to five?
Yeah, so if you haven't been up to the, the transfer station lately, their accessory building, their next building has been, is completed more or less, there's still a little bit of grading and seeding that we need to do around back for parking, but the, the public works, solid waste guys and water sewer guys are ecstatic that they have somewhere clean, dry, warm, and their own, actually, an inside bathroom that's accessible from the outside, or an outside bathroom and an inside bathroom, so the, that you don't have to get the inside one too dirty from the transfer station. So, I, I would say that's probably ninety-five percent complete. The transfer station itself, the tipping floor, if you've, have you been up there before we did all this, you would understand what the, the beauty of, of what we've done, that on the top left, you'll see that you see nothing but the truck, the truck, trailer, for the trash to go directly into the truck trailer. Everything to the right of that, that's all new, so when the loader would push trash, trash over, if they got a little too energetic, trash would go over top of the trailer, and they'd have to go down by hand and, and clean all that mess up after the trailer was pulled out, so all that's done, this part is one hundred percent complete, and we're good for the next ten, twelve, fifteen years at the transfer station. IT Projects, biggest one there is the admins, we, we're done with finance, human resources payroll is working out well. The next step is, you'll see the employee self-service, that's electronic timesheets, and the ability for an employee to go in, online, log in, and get your pay stubs, or find out how many vacation hours I have, rather than having to ask Christie or your department head every, every week to, 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 to find out. The next, that's gonna be hopefully by the end of November, end of December, we're hoping to get utilities on, on, onboarded. Sometime in late January, building permit code enforcement, stuff like that, and accounts receivable, business licensing. The big phase that's to finish up is going to be Commissioner and Treasurer, that's set for April. We were hoping to be able to do it before the end of the fiscal year, or at the end of, of a fiscal year, before the calendar year starts, or the end of a fiscal year, it's just not gonna work out, so everything else has been mid-year, so Commissioner and Treasurer are gonna have to go through the same thing. I've, I've spoken with, with folks, and I think we've, I think we have a pretty good grasp on, on what's, what's out there. Really, whatever data goes into the admins is only as good as what comes out of the AS four hundred, so I've been encouraging everybody to make sure you've got everything straight in the AS four hundred before we do that transfer.
Que- question, um, under the, I think it's Phase Two, under upcoming, the utilities, that would include the, the water building, correct?
Water sewer building, yes, sir.
Because I got a phone call from a constituent, express, expressing their displeasure with not being able to do this, so now I can circle back to him and say.
It's coming.
Coming.
Yeah, so hopefully.
Into this year, early next year.
We're, we're hoping with the online payment, website payment, that's still through payments.
It's still through payments for mail.
We're still, yeah, we're still working through, we're, we, we're not gonna be able to go on to the website and pay your bill with your credit card, but you can still call in, we're working through the process of, of getting the online payments, where I can just type things in and I don't have to worry about calling anybody, that's gonna be a little bit delayed, but it's.
So possibly Q one, twenty, twenty-six?
The goals, that's the goal.
They can't pay now online?
Not online, the only way to pay is either in person or pop, call and pay taxes. I know, but we're on, remember, we're on something that started in nineteen ninety-six.
You can pay through payments, you just have to two money box.
Have you all started training people as the Treasurers and, and Mr. Revenues?
Not yet, that'll, that'll start around the first of the year, when we, when we start talk, working on the, the transfer, the dead transfer.
And to Mr. Widener's comment there, that was the comment that was submitted to me, we're in the twenty-first century, why don't, why is Smith County not in the twenty-first century?
The answer that I would give you is, we were still in the nineteenth century with AS four hundred, we're moving to the twenty-first century with, not what I say nineteenth century, we're with, we're in the twen- we're still in the nineteen hundreds.
With the four hundred is in the eighteen hundreds.
It was, it was bad, it still is.
I, I'll, I'll circle back to him and share this information with him.
Some economic development projects, I don't know, do you, did you want to, can I just? So, we, we were awarded some one point five million dollars for the gross closed area, that's around the Brick Yard for sewer. Problem is, that's a six million dollar project, so we're still building some, some funds together, hoping to, to pull that, pull the trigger on that sometimes. And, yes, economic development pros- or, for the Brick Yard itself.
They gonna include any houses and stuff?
No, I think it's just industrial business.
There's only about three that are included.
Though, well, now the sewer line would, the sewer line from, from Exit fifty-four down to Space Side, there was about eighty-two houses, but that goes up Rocky Hollow and a few other, it, it's, it's still not enough to pay for a six million dollar project, not enough.
Now, that grant only covers site developments, so it's on site.
For that site.
Yes, but it's gonna pave the way for future money for.
Like Mount Rogers, Lake Water Program, for house.
The next. Pathway Park, we've, we're working through the Ready Sites Program through the Norfolk Southern. That's huge, because that basically turns the Pathway Park into a site that Norfolk Southern itself would help market. I think ADP already helps us with some, with, with the marketing, so this would just help broaden the, the outreach. Thriving, Thriving Communities Grant, we do have the Grant Rider on board, she has hit the ground running with a lot of grant applications out there. We've applied for some funds through ARC for Exit Fifty-four Concept Plan for, with the town, through Tobacco Commission for the Salt Trail, through, with, in partnership with Salt, Town of Saltville, and working on the, the Go Virginia to help match both of those. It's contract, ten hours a week.
Yeah, we have her through October twenty twenty-six.
Slowly, I'm working on it, but that's, that's the update that I have, unless you have any questions.
And she's wonderful, we worked with her on, on the BEAT grants last year, and the DHD.
The Saltville Library.
Yeah. We get the grants, but she did a great job.
You can't get turned out if you don't apply?
Right.
Okay. Alright, thank you for Project Pulse update, I don't think there's anybody, we don't need to make TKI share, okay? New business, mutual aid agreement with our police departments.
So, with, we have a new Commonwealth Attorney, we have some new police chiefs around the county. After discussion with, with Mr. Commonwealth Attorney, Mr. Blevins, we decided it was probably best to go ahead and update the currently, the current mutual aid agreement, which was signed probably in the early teens, so it includes all three towns, the county, the sh- the Commonwealth Attorney, the Hungry Mother, State, I'm sorry, State Park, and basically every law enforcement agency that's in the county to help, that would provide assistance to any other agency. I don't know if Withfull Community College is included in that or not, if I can find out.
We need to make sure that's.
Because of, over here at the end of Main Street.
I, I talked to their chief and he said as long, I don't know, sorry, I talked to their chief and I had mentioned it to Mr. Billings, and he had said as long as they're, is, they're having class, there's someone here. And we need to make sure we work out something with the radio too for them, if possible, just so they have access to something.
So, it includes, the current one is the Sheriff, the County, Chill Howie Police Department, Marion Police Department, Saltville Police Department, Department of Conservation and Recreation, and it's that, and that's it, so Withfull Community College is not included, but I can talk to Mr. Blevins.
I, I'm, I'm not sure if they would need to be, but, I mean, being they're. I believe we got a different mutual aid agreement with like the Tassel County, Withfull Community College, I don't remember who all, but we have.
Outside agencies.
We, we had another, we had one with those agencies at one time, whether we dropped, and I wouldn't think we would have dropped.
We, we have one in the school system with those community colleges.
I, I absolutely find out. But with that in mind, at least with the current form, we may bring back a revised one in the, in the, in the future, but I'd like to ask for authorization or approval of the mutual aid agreement and authorization of the County Administrator to execute on the county's behalf.
Okay. Alright.
I move we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, V dot Oak Grove Rule, excuse me, Road Rule Edition.
If you look over on page ninety-nine of the packet, or if you look on the PDS, page one oh five, there's, it starts an email from Miss Heath, kind of follows up on some of the discussion we had at the October Board Meeting. Oak Grove Road is in Saltville area, or I guess Crawford area, and there were some questions on whether Oak Grove Road was actually part of V dot's system. She was finally able to find the plotted right-of-way documentation at the courthouse, so in your packet is a draft resolution for the Board's consideration on page one hundred, and a map showing the additional area of Oak Grove Road, which basically would go almost to the cul-de-sac, to be formally included into the V dot secondary road system as a no-cost rule addition. So, I'm asking that the, the Board consider that resolution of support, as well as approving the V dot Form AM dash four point three as presented.
Okay. Let's see, alright, do we, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Alright, and we have a second, Mr. Billings, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Okay, next item, CDBG Scattered Site Housing Grant forms.
So, I'm gonna apologize for this one, it's gonna, it, it's probably a hundred pages of the packet, just in, in this, but as I showed on the Budget Amendment, we were awarded a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars for Hurricane Helene recovery, and even though it's just under two hundred thousand dollars, it's not a lot of money, but the, the state still requires us to do everything that's required, even if we got two million dollars. So, in your packet is a list of, of forms that we have approved four times that I know of that I've been here, and it's the same thing, just different dates, honestly. So, the certificate of signatures basically formalizes who's allowed to, to sign the drawdown request for money. Business Employment Plan says that we're gonna try and use small minority businesses as much as possible. Non-discrimination policy just, is, is just that, we agreed not to discriminate on a variety of issues. The Grievance Procedures does provide the applicants a, a way to appeal any decisions. Residential anti-displacement plan, we can't go in and relocate someone if they don't wanna be relocated, basically, is a, is an easy way to look at it. Certificate, Certification Officer for Environmental Review, we have to do a full environmental analysis on whatever houses we do, because it's coming from the state and federal, so the Cert- Certification Officer appoints me as that person that can sign the environmental report, report. Fair Housing Certification, we have to do something every year to help support fair housing, and then there's two contracts, one, both of them with the Mount Rogers PDC, one for grant administration, which is ten percent, and one for rehab specialists, which is just under ten percent, I think, seven percent. So, what I'd like to ask is, we can do as one, rather than having to take ten different actions, or nine different actions, authorize the execution of all the policies, procedures, plans, and contracts presented, authorize County Administrator to do that. I'd be glad to work, we'll read them if you want to, it's only seven oh six, we still have plenty of time.
No, no, no.
Just kidding.
I think we're all in favor of lumping those together in one motion, so with that being said, do I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Mr. Farthing, you, you, you good with this? Alright, that's all I needed to hear, alright, alright, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Alright, next item on the agenda, agenda is our report from our county attorney.
May I be back in just a second?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does that include me signing the designation of Certified Officer and Environmental Responsibility Certificate?
I, I hope so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
I don't have anything to report this evening, thank you.
You do the same way, doesn't it?
Alright, next we have reports from the County Administration and staff.
So, I have a few items, if you, in the purple tab, if you wanted to look through them, we have the Smith Grove Quarterly Report. We're closing in on that hundred house goal quicker than we expected, so I'm, I'm just proud, wanted to make sure that, that you guys saw that. The Hurricane Recovery Report that we put together for Wellspring Foundation and United Way, is a, there's a summary report there showing how many houses have been helped so far. V dot Report, the speed study on Ad Wolf, we have an email from, from Miss Heath, basically saying that the, following the speed study, there's no rec- there's a recommendation, or not a recommendation, to do anything to the speed limit. Basically saying the forty-five mile an hour speed limit was, was low enough. I knew it's coming.
So, do, do they take into consideration crashes into houses with, with that?
I'm honestly not sure, but it's, it's already on my list for V dot to comment on at their next quarterly.
Okay, I, I just, I, I agree, yeah, that ways that stretch right through there.
I would also comment, it says seventeen crashes in a three-year period. I know that that ends at four thirty, there's been other crashes that happened post April thirtieth of this year, so my guess is that seventeen, I'd like to see it broken down by how many per year, I mean, are we ten in the last year? And seven for the previous two years? As somebody that's responded to most of those calls.
Is that straight, stretch, you talking about there?
Our, right above our name going toward Ad Wolf.
Right before you get the big third. Right there at the graveyard, old roundhouse?
No, this is back coming from the old food center going toward the fire department.
This call, there's been three houses struck by vehicles, three seven one in the past.
Three year houses.
Yeah.
Right there at that roundhouse where my brother got killed.
Common sense, I don't think that would cost a qual- that right there won't, I mean, should make a qualify.
Three houses, but five wrecks within a hundred and fifty yards of each other.
I'll tell you, once you get a decision from the Highway Department, I've worked for them five years, your stuff.
I make sure, I, I have made sure that that's on the agenda, the list.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
We've talked about the convenience station, the V dot traffic count, so we've been talking about trying to figure out what to do with this, this building, the first and foremost thing that we need to do is just plan it ahead, V dot's gonna require traffic analysis, no matter what, where we go or what we do, so I've asked V dot to put a traffic counter in the parking lot just before the ADA parking, so we can get a num- an idea of how many cars come through here every day. They want to have that for us for a week, so we can get that data, and use it for whatever analysis we will need in the future. So, that's just a, a thinking ahead kind of thing, just wanted to let you know, if you, when you see the rumble strips, stop and drive back and forth a few times, just to add the, add the numbers. Another thing that, that Ms. Pitts has been working on is the food drive, we're partnering with the Town of Marion to, to host a, a food drive to benefit First United Methodist Church, so we encourage donations, the donation boxes around, out here in front. Christmas luncheon for employees and, and Board, December twelfth, Friday, December twelfth, put that on your calendar, it's just after our Board Meeting in December, Hungry Mother State Park at the, I never remember the name of that.
Inlock.
Inlock Haven, thank you. So, make sure you, you, either RSVP, there's a link there in the packet, or just let us know, we can add you to it, or I'll add you to it. And then, one thing that I forgot to put on here, we've been talking about Christmas bonus internally, school board has, has had a discussion, and they've formally approved a five hundred dollar full-time, two hundred fifty dollar part-time bonus for, for employees to be paid out December. Social Services Board will be considering the same thing next week at their Board Meeting, so I wanted to go ahead and, and throw that out to the Board Supervisors for County Employees, looking at the cost last year, it was just under a hundred and eight thousand dollars total, for a five hundred dollar for full-time, two fifty for part-time. Knowing that we, we have done, we did the, the bonus in July following the state budget recommendations, the, the funds that we budgeted in the, for bonuses were, I think we bu- budgeted a thousand dollars each, and we ended up at eight hundred. So, we're not gonna be far off if we do end up going, going with the five hundred and two fifty, so I guess that my recommendation would be to go ahead and consider that, especially since the school board's going, already done it, and I expect the DSS Board to, to approve their, their side. This year, I will say that we're pushing very hard to make sure that we're all doing the same thing, and I think that's, I think that's where we're gonna land. So, if that is the Board, if you guys are fine with that, I would, we need a recommendation, a motion and a second for that.
Where did I take?
We all intend to quit.
Does this include their agencies, like the library and so forth?
We, we budgeted the same for, for the library.
All right. You have a motion, we have a motion, and we have a second.
All I was going to say is, listen, when things are, when things are going good, people work hard, and we expect them to work even harder to do everything we need when things are tight. I think if we can, if, you know, I think we need to do as, as best we can.
And these bonuses are after, after taxes, correct?
Yeah, what we'll do is, we'll pay, the employee will end up with five hundred dollars and two hundred and fifty, and we cover the taxes ahead of, over, above that.
Perfect.
As a, as a second note, it's not like we got the highest paid employees in the, in the state.
I agree.
I, I, they need it, we need to pay our employees and tell them we need them.
Like a current one hundred percent. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm staying.
You abstaining?
Two and one. Thank you.
Okay, so vote six oh one, six oh one.
And that's all I have for my report.
All right, next we have supervisor Call at the time, I have Mr. Atkins over here working on it, I'm going, he is going to hand me a card.
Let's see, who's up first?
Probably mine, Ronald Donal Corky.
Oh.
Go ahead and get the long one out of the way. Don't have to be mean.
I just want to reiterate what was mentioned earlier, Veterans Day this past week, thank you to all the veterans and everyone that continues to serve. Especially want to just keep your thoughts and prayers to the ones who are not home with their families, maybe serving overseas or other places in the continental US. A special thank you for Deputy David Crye, who was here tonight. You know, whether, whether he understood the situation or not, there were several lives there that, that, that he, he potentially saved, well, he did save. And there's no, there's no easy way to go about it, as the major had said, but, and, and especially being the officer that has to do that, but, but we truly thank each and every one of them for what they're doing, for their service. Something else I wanted to bring up again, I've brought it up a few times, me and Mr. Billings had spoke about this the other day. Real estate taxes, I would like to see maybe just a survey, something about moving to the two times a year. I think, I, I don't know if you can do a referendum on it or not, I know we're already sort of past that, but.
I have it somewhere, surprisingly, the, the state issues a, a report on who does what, and I had that somewhere. I was looking at for something else, but I think we have that available. There's, two thirds that do it around the state, they do it twice a year, and probably a third that don't. So I, I was surprised.
That might mean something then, I mean, you know, and I understand the transition may be an issue.
And, and I think Mr. Atkins had always worried about the, the rates, and it has that rate too, so I'll share that with the board.
I, I just think it's important to look at, I mean, you know, and, and I think when it comes down to it, I think the, the public needs to be the one, our citizens need to be the one, you know, advocating for whether they want to or not. And I think it's, it was brought up by Mr. Billings, you know, a survey or something like that may be the best way to do, something to help guide us, because I, I do think it would be probably hard on us to be able to just make that decision on our own. So moving on, the children, again, anything we can do to do what we can to help the kids of this community and everything. We, we do appreciate the Isaiah House there in Bristol, and of course, want to be able to utilize it, but, but still, the, the accessibility and everything like that, and like I said, it's just not knowing for sure the numbers, when they come in and how many. So other than that, I just want to thank the staff, probably do, you're all, thank you. And the, I, I still got a hit on the, is it sixty-second? Or ninety-second? Ninety-second clip?
Yes.
I've, I've heard some good things about that, that, that is pretty, pretty amazing, pretty impressive, so, is that my timer?
That was great.
Okay.
That was a thirty-three minute timer.
Supervisor Atkins.
First off, I want to thank you all for the condolences and expression of sympathy on my wife's passing. It was greatly appreciated by me and my family. I want to thank you all, the board, for looking out at me at the convention, I mean, my mind was about half air, but I, 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 I picked up some things, hopefully my being there will be for the benefit of the county, but thank you all again. Secondly, thank you for all the veterans, I wasn't here, Veterans Night, but thank you for this county for recognizing the veterans that they do, Courtney, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And don't forget, and this is something that's not overnight, but we got the two hundred and fiftieth celebration of, of Virginia. We need to maybe find somebody, and we may already, but we need to find somebody that's going to spearhead, spearhead that year in Smith County. We need to be on the right end of that celebration.
So I've been invited to attend one of the fut, the next Virginia two fifty committees, meetings, to turn, morph that into the Smith two hundred committee. So it's, yeah, we're, we're working that direction.
Speaking of that, so you have?
We have the committee that's been meeting since November of twenty twenty-two, that Amanda leads. We met on Tuesday, we had our most recent meeting. So we did a whole series of programs this year in twenty twenty-five, and we're planning our series for twenty twenty-six. One of the things we would like to do for twenty twenty-six is a reading of the Declaration of Independence on the Fourth of July. Fireworks are wonderful and baseball games are wonderful, but we as a committee feel like we want to go back to that basic that on the Fourth. And so we will be appealing to many of you to participate in that reading. And, yeah, we're going to chop it up, it's, it's a long text, and so we're going to chop it up, right now it looks like about twenty sections, so we'll be looking for readers. We don't, we are not sure we can get public participation to come to such an event, so we're going to propose to the radio station that we record it and get all of our readers to go in and record it, and then ask them to play it on the Fourth of July. And then obviously, we promote it through all of our organizations. And then the other idea we have is a film series of films, and we've already talked to the Lincoln Theater, and they're on board. So some of the famous ones, like The Patriot, but also The Crossing, April Mornings, so we've got, like, we've done the investigation on licensing to be able to show those films. So something that will be a little more popular with folks and get them engaged in it.
It'll be the Fourth of July before we know it.
I know.
I just wanted to mention too, so coming up, I think I thought it was Sean, you've also, of course, you have the Smith County coming up, and then you've also got the state park. I don't know if anybody's aware of that, a hundred year anniversary, and, but it, I mean, it's, it's just a few years out, but I mean, everything's, everything's right there, close together. So I, I know the Kevin McGon with the state park, he's, he was telling me about it the other day and some things they want to do, so that may be somebody to get with also, sorry. They may interrupt you.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I'm finished, everybody be safe.
And a new, a new word that we learned at our VACO conference is a semi-quincentennial. Semi-quincentennial, so that's the word that's been used for the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of our country.
Nobody can say that word, so everyone says two fifty.
Okay, actually, I'm up next, and first of all, this last, your thoughts and prayers for Mayor Henninger of Chilhawee. He and his wife were severely injured in a car accident up here at our favorite intersection up here at X, off of Exit Forty-seven. So the one that we've had many discussions about, so he's still in the hospital, my understanding is he had to go back in for surgery maybe yesterday again, so he's been in the hospital now for about three weeks. Please give them your thoughts and prayers. Thought we had a great fellowship at the VACO conference, thank everyone that attended, and hopefully we get all, one year we get all seven board members there, and really good time. Also, I'd like to congratulate some of our county teams, Northwood, on a great football season, and they'll be playing at Honeaker tomorrow night. Chilhawee will be playing at home against Twin Springs tomorrow night at seven o'clock. And also, the Chia High School volleyball team was region champions, and they'll be playing in the state quarterfinals this Saturday at Chia High School against Auburn High School at seven o'clock. So congratulations to those athletic teams. And also, I'd like to say a big thank you, I know we have two veterans on our board here, am I correct too? And I'd like to say thank you all for your service and all you've done, I know Mr. Widener and I had a lot of conversations about his service as we were going to the VACO conference and stuff, so you, you all can never be thanked enough for what you've done for us in our country. Bottom of my heart, I want to say thank you. All right. Jason Paris.
Thanks, sir. I pushed the button. I'll, I guess I'll echo what everybody says, I know Roscoe hates it, so that's the reason I do it. Just thank the staff for everything they do, the way they take care of us. Maddie for the, you know, the email she sends out when it comes time to do something as far as progress along, it's really good, and some of the, some of the things, the ninety seconds, the, with the internship or the ambassadors or whatever we're calling it, I think anything we can do to engage the youth. Once again, Veterans Day can never give them enough thanks for, for what they did, whether they left the country or they served, you know, locally. For the people that had done that, whether they did it, but, but were they voluntold or they volunteered? Some people had a choice, some people didn't, but I, I appreciate every, each and every one of them for their service. We'll say, we will not see you before then, so I will say, hopefully everybody has a happy Thanksgiving. It is a time for us to be thankful for what we have, but as we talk, there's a lot of misfortunate or unfortunate people, however you want to say it, that here in this county, and well, in this part of the, in this park. And anything we can do as a board, we need to be looking at to how we can help. I always call it a hand up, not a hand out, you know, try to help them, you know, get back on their feet, and anything we can do with that, I do appreciate it. So parks and wrecks, it's glad to, you know, hear about what that has done, especially for, for Marion, and, and I know that Mike, you know, he congratulated Marion, or Chilhawee and Northwood on their football success. I've still been telling people, I think we're four years, so another couple of years out, I think that this Little League program will feed right into the high school program, and in my, and in my mind, this will lead right back to a successful program here with all the other ones. So I do thank you for everything you do, and I'll give it back to whoever.
All right. Mr. Billings.
Just to echo what everybody said, thanks to the veterans. And I know we said something about the radio system and starting maybe having quarterly meetings, and I would second that and urge that, and to include the law enforcement agencies in the town, because we're kind of in the dark. You know, everybody asks me what's going on, and, and I can't answer it for the most part, so. And I think even going further, you know, maybe have like a monthly or quarterly meeting with all the law enforcement agencies, all EMS and fire, and, and keep everybody informed and everything, what's going on. That way, everybody can be prepared, instead of getting called on our heels, standing in the middle of the road that turns into a river, wondering what's going on. So that, that cannot happen again. So we need to be more prepared, and we need to be more informed, and therefore, we need to meet more, I believe, and talk. And, you know, there's probably a lot of agencies that don't know who Chris Crawford is, they've probably never seen him. And I'm not kicking him or nothing else, but he probably don't know some of the law enforcement people or, or whatever, so. So we need to, you know, make it a team of teams and, and all get together, I believe, so. With that, it was a good VACO, I enjoyed it, and I think we learned some good stuff, had some good fellowship to get together, and thanks to the staff, y'all were doing a great job. I'll echo the ninety second thing, I've watched it several times and really enjoy it, and you all must get more out of it than you do sitting in here sometimes, because it's all.
The extreme.
Ninety seconds.
The extreme.
Yeah, so, so it's a great thing, you're doing a great job, I think all the staff is, so.
Good things coming and good things happening, so I appreciate all the board, and I think we're doing a good job, we need to continue, and congratulations to my partner in crime beside over here, he is we'll get to work with him, we'll get to continue to work with him, so I think we can keep on doing what we're doing and doing, doing good at it, so that's enough.
Thank you, Mr. Billings, Mr. Aliff.
I too want to thank the veterans for their service to our country. I also want to congratulate Mr. Call and Mr. Widener here, winning their reelection campaigns here, look forward to another few more years working with them. Also want to thank the staff, Maddie did a wonderful job keeping me corralled in here, last week I was almost AWOL, because I was just crazy in my life, and I was spent the last week at Williamsport Headquarters, Little League, doing an umpire academy. So Maddie was able to keep me on track, to be able to step away from the conference and participate remotely, and thank you all for allowing me to do that. Also, you know, some of my business training, it talks about if you can't measure your data, you really don't know what you've got. So my question is, and I know I'm going to throw another plate in front of you to try to fill for the staff, do we have any measurements to figure out, is our county stagnant? Is it growing, is it decreasing in population? To figure out what's, what's the breathing in and out of population for our little tablet here?
And so the UVA's Weldon Cooper Center puts, puts that together every year. If you look at their stat, they, they look at building permits, deaths, birth rates, a whole that need of, of different data sets. And if you look at theirs, we're losing a little, nowhere near as much as we had been, so it's kind of leveled off. But that's never one hundred percent accurate, it may, you know, come twenty, thirty, when they do the census, it may show that we've gained a thousand, but it's showing that we're at least leveling off.
Okay, got you, thank you. Also, I have one other, I guess, piece of business, a few months ago, we had an issue with Ms. Hester up on Hockett Street, and her paving, creating a fall issue. Where are we at with that conversation?
I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure the town has remedied that, they went in and, and fixed the shoulder and, and there's no issue, but I will double check to make sure for some reason. Yeah, she checked with clay, yeah, I thi, I think that's been fixed.
Okay, thank you, I just saw my notes and I thought it went to the back of my brain and I forgot about it, so I just wanted to ask. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else to add relevant, just thank the staff for everything they do, and I think the reports are getting easier for me to understand, so thank you very much. Before, they just kind of looked like numbers, now they're starting to make sense. So thank you.
Okay, we save the best for last, Mr. Call.
Well, I have to say, I agree with everything everybody said. About the veterans and everything, I appreciate everybody for my election, and who voted for me out there, who didn't, I don't matter, leave you all anyway. I'll help them, I don't care where they at. All my friends was over there, of course, saying I was going to lose and everything, and then going voting for me, I know what they did. Now, there's one thing, I was kind of surfing the internet the other day, you know, which I don't do very often, being the old cat, don't agree on what we want to look at. But running up on Veterans Day, and I do agree with the veterans, since they, you know, a lot of But running up on Veterans Day, and I do agree with the veterans, since they, you know, a lot of them went over and come back with, uh, no legs, no arms, bad things happened, good friends of mine told me, some go, don't come back. I feel sorry for them.
I'm sorry. Nah, don't be.
A lot of them come back with no mind. I know my brother had a hard time with it, he was wounded twice, had malaria, died from AIDS. Uh, think about it, people. I'm sorry.
I think we all share Mr. Call's sentiments one hundred percent, one hundred percent.
Sorry about that. Never be.
Never be, yeah.
But, you know, I care about them, joke about them and stuff, but I do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, like at this time, uh, we need to go into closed session. Mr. Widener.
I'd like to make a motion entering the closed session, PUC section two point two dash three seven one one, under A three, discussion consideration acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property, uh, regarding, uh, Main Street properties. And A seven, Hostelation Political Council, and briefing by staff members of consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation, according to real property.
I'll second it.
We have motion second, all those in favor, we can go in closed session, say aye.
Aye.